Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this school board work session. Tonight, Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, it is 6:20 PM. The purpose of tonight's meeting, or school board work session, is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. Tonight's topics, there will be three. Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, or ECMAC. Number two, the Fiscal Year 2020 Long-Range Financial Planning Process. And number three, discussion regarding our superintendent search. The outcomes of this meeting, the board members will understand and provide direction on ongoing ECMAC option development process, receive preliminary information about and provide direction to the ongoing fiscal year 2020 budget process, and then begin discussion on the superintendent's search. So with that, I would like to turn it over. Well, let's do a roll call, starting with my left.
Jessica Craig, school board member.
Jim Balk, interim superintendent.
Patricia Magnuson, executive director of Finance and Operations.
Steve Fisk, assistant superintendent.
Laura Anderson, executive director of Human Resources.
Kelly Parpert, assistant superintendent.
Anthony Matternus, executive director of Technology.
Patrick Smith, interim assistant superintendent.
Brian Severson Hall, executive director of Community Engagement.
Tim Palmetier, general counsel.
Barb Olson, director of School/Community Relations.
Dean Henke, school board member.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Michael Stoffey, school board chair. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Patricia Magnuson to discuss ECMAC. Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you. Good evening. Gerald Stoffey, board members, Superintendent Balk, and Cabinet members. There is a presentation that I thought we were going to flip to. There it is. So I'm going to just take you through a little bit of history, very briefly, and then set you up for the work that we're doing. I want to just talk to you a little bit about the work we've been doing to develop options related to the recommendations that ECMAC brought to the board through the superintendent last May. This year, our ECMAC committee includes 33 community members. We have 12 staff members, two school board members, and we also have two industry experts with us, so there's 49 folks in total in our meetings. We have six more meetings scheduled throughout this year, and as per our tradition of meeting in schools, we are planning to go to Rice Lake Elementary School. We'll be at Maple Grove Senior this year, Crestview Elementary, and at Osseo Middle School. And the remainder of the meetings are here at the ESC. So we already talked about the outcome tonight. We want you to really learn about our current thinking, about the option development. And before I take you through that, I want to remind the board of the framework that we've been working within. And this year, we've been talking about the fact that we have activated all parts of the framework. So if you think about how the framework works, that middle circle represents all of the work of staff that we do on a day-to-day, month-to-month, year-over-year basis. We're continuing to enroll students, to hire staff, to think about capacity, to do work in buildings, run lotteries. We process students over the summer. And that data, that work creates data, which goes out to ECMAC. And for, this is our third year now, ECMAC, over on the right-hand side of the framework, has been looking at data and analyzing data. Last year, we brought some recommendations forward. So as you come down to the bottom of the outer circle, ECMAC turned some recommendations over to the superintendent, who, with the support of the board, has asked staff to start to develop options. And so now, we're in this option development process while we continue to work in the center, while we continue to have ECMAC look at the new data to make sure it still supports what we do. So we're working on all parts of the framework. I also wanted to take you back to last spring, where we spent a lot of time, we were sort of past gathering data. We had a pattern around the data we were gathering. We've spent a lot of last year interpreting data, but most importantly, making sure, as ECMAC, we had a shared understanding of what the data was telling us, what were the needs. And we had great discipline in not going past that and start to think about what the options would be until we understood, there's a problem to solve. So we talked to the board in the spring about the recommendations, and then later this fall, in September, we started talking about splitting them into short-term options and long-term options. There were some things that were felt more urgent, and then in addition to that, they were doable for several reasons. Some things that didn't have as large of an expenditure associated with it, didn't need as much time, didn't need more time for the data to bear itself out. So the board gave us the okay on continuing to think about those options, so we started to develop them. And we knew that for the options we were thinking about, the things that might be involved would be attendance area adjustments, and constructing an addition or an expansion to a school. So just those two highlighted areas. And we were really concentrating, then later, on Basswood, Rice Lake, and Garden City, the overcapacity conditions there. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a little bit. What we did in September, then, is came to the board and said, in order to fund that option, we need to ma, and in order to maintain construction as an option, as we think through this, the board needs to take action to expand our lease levy authority. And the board may, took that action in September, so that we could continue to think through these options, keeping construction as a possibility on the table. And we talked about that with the board, about $15 million, with an estimated tax impact on a $250,000 home of $18 a year. So as we started to think that through, and work as a staff and with our industry experts, we came forward with some options. Did I go past? So this document is in the packet. So in late October, the staff had finally developed some options for consideration and for further study. And this document, in its entirety, is included in your packet. And we reviewed this with ECMAC at our October meeting, October 29th meeting. So here's the parts. Here's what we're really talking about. The option is to construct an addition or expansion at Oakview Elementary School and at Garden City Elementary School. And this solution surfaced for several reasons. The first one is that the project estimate for those additions is within the $15 million lease levy authority. So we knew that we could complete this project within the budget. The core capacity area at Oakview and Garden City could accommodate additional students. So, meaning, the cafeteria is big enough, the hallways are big enough, the media centers, the gyms are big enough to take on additional students if we did an expansion at that school, which is not the case for the other schools that were overcapacity. Rice Lake and Basswood could not take on additional students, so the cost became more prohibitive. We couldn't get it in under the $15 million limit. Oakview, the third reason, is if you think about Oakview, you may or may not know that Oakview has a similar floor plan to Basswood, Rush Creek, and Fernbrook. Those three schools have had most recent additions of either eight or 10 classrooms that Oakview has not had. So this addition would make Oakview's floor plan look similar to those sister schools, and it could accommodate the additional capacity within its core area. We don't know what to do with a school that gets well over 1,000 students, as far as administrative staffing and to continue to effectively instruct students. And so what we know is that this option would help us to keep Basswood's population a little bit smaller, so that we wouldn't have to start to think about adding administrative and support staff to continue to maintain that high student, the high student numbers there. We know also that Oakview and Carton City can accommodate space for additional parking. We are not so sure about that for Basswood and Rice Lake, so it would take some kind of tremendous investment in order to make that work. And we also know that this project can be completed by the fall of 2020. So those are the reasons behind that. We did eliminate thinking about the secondary options, because if you think about the three, thinking about the secondary options for the short term. We have them on the table for a longer-term option, but in the short term, our secondary schools are all overcapacity, and their core infrastructure needs to be expanded. The cafeterias aren't large enough. Some of the hallways don't move in the right way with the additional students. So we are really going to need to not only make significant additions to all three of the high schools eventually, but we'll have to make some big changes to the core areas. That will require a larger investment that would require voter approval. That just takes more time. And we talked about that at our meeting in September. And I just want to remind you that this is in a draft form until we continue to vet it as a staff, and until the school board ultimately takes action to provide funding. The other part of this option, to reduce the overcapacity conditions at those three schools, would require a boundary change, an attendance area adjustment. We'd be moving students from Basswood and Rice Lake. So to complete the work on this option, we created an attendance area team. It's a subcommittee of ECMAC. So we have 14 parents from the ECMAC team, and we're going to begin our work on Monday, on November 19th. And they will report back to ECMAC on their findings throughout this year, and will complete their findings, we hope, and report to ECMAC in February. And again, I want to just say here that these attendance area changes would be for two years from now, so for the fall of 2020. That's one of the things we heard loud and clear through the ECMAC development, framework development process, is that parents and families need time to make adjustments. So as we pulled that group together, we wanted to, oh, this is also a draft. Until we complete our work, until we were clear that the board wanted to have us continue the work, I just want to keep that in mind as well. So there's a second document. Then, as we started to think about pulling together an attendance area team, we wanted to think about what they might consider as they approached the work. ECMAC provided us, provided us some feedback on this document on October 29th, and we wanted to get any feedback from the board tonight. So here's the parts of that guiding principles and other considerations document. The first part is simply the guiding principles from ECMAC. I thought we should start there. We spent several months working on these guiding principles for all of the work of the team, so we assumed that that would be an important part of the work for boundary changes. So what we're going to do on Monday, on November 19th, is we'll have the attendance area team spend some time thinking about, how might these guiding principles influence the work? So we can really think about that before we dive into the actual work of building attendance area options. Then the other part are some additional things to consider. So we pulled from our own experiences and from the work of several of our neighboring school districts, and took what we thought were some of the best practices that they had in common, and that seemed to fit with what we were trying to accomplish in Osseo Area Schools. And I want you to know that we know that some of these things might be in conflict with each other. And we probably aren't going to be able to satisfy each one of these in every case, but these are things that the committee will consider as we work, as we work through this process. And also, on Monday, along with the guiding principles, we'll take the attendance area team through some thinking before they start the work in earnest. How might this look? If we were going to attend to this additional consideration, what might that result in? So we can think that through before we start the work. And again, until we've received school board feedback this evening, we still consider this document to be in a draft form. And I just want to say again, to keep in mind that any attendance area change would be for two years from now, for the fall of 2020. So really, here's our next steps. Our attendance area team will begin our work on Monday. We also have a team that has our three assistant superintendents. Dale Carlstrom sits on that team, and some others that are thinking about instructional spaces. So as we think about the possibility of adding classroom spaces, or even a longer-term idea of adding even more space, that we think about how the facility can best support instruction. And so we want to be ahead of that and have those conversations prepared, so that by the time we come to March or April with a recommendation, we've, we will have thought that through and spent some time visiting other school districts and learning about best practices. We also, in November, the Hennepin County will mail out our truth and taxation statements, so our community will start to see the tax impact. That's important, because the lease levy that would support the short-term solutions was included in September's preliminary levy, which means that that tax impact is included in statements that go out in November. So in December, after a public meeting, the board will set the final levy. And at that point, you can decide whether to keep that lease levy in play, so that we can keep construction on the table as an option. At that point, if the board approves that, we will, that will be locked into taxpayers' property tax statements for 2019. Once we bring the final recommendation to the board after the attendance area team meets and brings its recommendations to ECMAC, we'll bring all of our recommendations to the superintendent, and ultimately to the school board in the spring. We're thinking March or April. At that time, if the board, it doesn't mean that we've sold the $15 million worth of bonds. So if the board wants us to continue, then we move forward with the bond issue. If the board still wants to hold up and even reverse the tax levy, we can't make a change for people's property tax statements in 2019, but we can do a reversal of the levy the following year. It just keeps us in the game all the way along. It's a problem of timing, but this is the way we keep the funding in play. You'll have another chance, like I said, to check in with us in December, and then again in about March or April, as a board. Again, any of this construction, or any of these boundary changes, will be effective for the fall of 2020. So there would be a long design time, some bids that the board would have to look at, and then the construction would begin later in 2019, and throughout the summer of 2020 for the fall. And I just wanted to, today, I went through, going back to 2014, throughout the time of creating the framework, we've had 100, nearly 100, about 96 staff and community members have been involved in ECMAC work, either on the original task force or on the ECMAC committee itself. And they helped us create processes and tools and a shared understanding, and that has really been tremendous work. And we've been very open that our purpose is to increase community trust in this work that we're doing around enrollment and capacity planning. We have been very grateful for the community and staff's deep engagement in the work, and we take it very seriously. So I thank you very much for accommodating all of these updates to the board and helping us through it one step at a time. So the question I have for the board is whether the board continues to support the process and direction of our ECMAC option development work.
Does anyone have any questions for Patricia?
No, this isn't easy work. I know that in the past, we had some issues with the community because we weren't as transparent and open, and this time around, we are. So I thank you for the work, and it's not easy work. And boundary changes are always difficult. So this is something I'll, I support it at this point. This is one issue that I'm really looking at very carefully and closely, so, but as of right now, this is, I support it.
Heather Douglas?
Yes. I was, I had some questions about the attendance area team. We're talking about two specific schools this go-around. Are the members of that team residents of those areas, or are they just members of the team that are already on ECMAC?
The thing I want to clarify is that, well, the answer is, I'll have to look at that to be sure.
Okay.
I wasn't specifically looking for volunteers from Rice Lake and Basswood.
Okay.
I, we, I know there are Rice Lake and Basswood parents on ECMAC. What I would have to do is double-check to see if they volunteered to be on the attendance area team. That being said, it's possible that multiple school district attendance, school attendance areas could be impacted by this.
Right. That's why I was curious.
Right. It might, it won't, it likely won't be just Oakview, Rice Lake, and Basswood. There could be, I just, I can't foreshadow yet.
Sure.
How the work will unfold.
I guess what I was more wondering is, how were those members selected, which it sounds like it was just volunteer-based?
It was volunteers from the ECMAC committee. What I did was recruited that, those that had been on the committee, I foreshadowed for them, those that had been on the committee for two years or more. And then, when I got the group together, had them trained, we have several new members this year, we took volunteers at our October 29th meeting, and we ended up then with 14 parents who volunteered.
All right, thank you.
Patricia, I have a couple of questions. So with, with Oakview, some prior knowledge of the last time large changes were made, can you just give me a little background on why Oakview did not receive the expansion at the time the others were expanded?
That, I do not know the answer to. I assume, at the time, it was the best estimates of when growth was happening in the, in the boundary area as it was. That would be my, my best guess.
And with Garden City, I know it's one of our smaller schools, some background on how they're now at or overcapacity. Is it the neighborhood changing over? Is there new development? Just so I have a sense of, right, my past historical knowledge of, they were kind of holding their own, and now, now they're overcapacity.
Classroom size buy-down, what we're doing.
Yeah. Well, parts of, parts of what's different about Garden City than a Basswood is that they do run lower class sizes, so their capacity, they, they use more capacity for that reason, because they have additional funding to reduce class size. But Garden City also is a school that seems to draw from its boundary area. Families choose, choose there and stay there.
Yeah, in that geographic area, yep. And I'll just share this piece, so, the past practice, previously when I was on the board, seeing the attendance area, you know, the census data, we, we saw that all as we were having the meetings, and so it was more board involvement, and so now with the committee, I'm not just saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying from my past experience. And so now, we did not, the board at that time did not do a lot of work by committee, and so I'm now having to rely on a process that I'm not familiar with, and so not, and you guys know me, I'm kind of the detailed person, kind of wanting to go from A to Z, understanding. So from my knowledge, we were here, and now we're here, trying to fill in those gaps. And so what I do know is, when we're looking at attendance areas, boundary changes, that's a really significant impact on students. So maybe for me, I'll have to find some time to see where those attendance areas are, what the group is thinking of doing, just so that I can be informed.
So one of the things that you'll find, there's, ECMAC has a button on the front page of the website right now, and for as long as we've been in existence, all of the materials from every meeting are online. And I think the best resource, and I believe it's right at the top of the ECMAC page, once you click in, is the summary of progress report. All of the data is in there that informed the recommendation. And I'm assuming that we will publish the work of the attendance area team as well, in some form, so that the community can keep up to date, and I'll talk to the superintendent about other updates that we'll do for the board.
Yeah, because for me, those census area overlays are very important. You know, here's the school, here's the census areas feeding that school. I know years ago, some of the changes we did, not all of them were contiguous, and so I think Oakview was one of the schools kind of in our southwest-ish area below the freeway, where we had census areas coming in from other non-contiguous to populate that school. Okay.
All three of those schools have non-contiguous boundaries. Basswood, Rice Lake, and Oakview are three elementary schools with non-contiguous boundaries.
Yeah, Rice Lake, I know at the time, that's where my daughters went, and so they, they had, I think they're drawing from north, north of 94, and from what is now, what's the name of that development? In between Lifetime Fitness and the gravel pits. That whole new area, there was not a lot there years ago.
Right, there's now four, foursome thousand citizens there that weren't there five years ago.
Yeah, so, in my mind, I can understand how, you know, then I even understand my own neighborhood is turning over. Empty nesters are moving out, new families moving in, so, so some of them, I still have that historical perspective of where they're at, and I think I've got a better view on Garden City. So now, it's just kind of Oakview, how and why the capacity's there.
So I just want to ensure that people understand that we're talking about something in the short term, two-year project, but one of the guidelines that I didn't necessarily see in here was to be one-and-done. And since we have talked about the potential need for a new school, we own the land up by the temple in the northwest corner, that we're not going to look to do more boundary changes in whatever short, fairly short timeframe when we would probably need that school, when that area of Maple Grove and Corcoran and Dayton finally build all up.
So you'll see that value reflected in two places. One is in the ECMAC guiding principles. The third one is to be sustainable. We'll talk about it with the attendance area team, but I see that value reflected there. And also, in our other considerations, to limit the number of transitions for individual students, I imagine that is reflected there. We, I wouldn't want to move a family in two years and then make another move. We want to be really mindful of that.
Okay.
And I would just add, and, and with that, the more we can show forward what we're planning on doing, families are going to make their own decisions. They may decide they want to move from the Rice Lake area, and they will, you know, physically move their home to that new area. So the further out we can tell them what we're thinking of doing, they will also help make those decisions for themselves.
I agree. And if, I thought I had heard at one point, if we're going forward with, you know, a build option, if that is selected, that there would be plenty of time for involvement of the families to be involved in designing that new space. Because, you know, we, we have some opportunity to do some new things that we haven't built in quite some time, so.
The design would begin after the board would accept the idea, and by then, we should have made the recommendation, at least, about the attendance area. So I would think, if we wanted a process to involve families in some way, we could think that through, involve the school, community.
Yeah, just thinking ahead to potential transitions. As you said, making them as smooth, as smooth as possible. But again, nothing's been decided. We're just looking at options, so.
Just starting.
Yes, just starting.
Say that about through more time.
Yeah. Nothing has been decided.
Will the board have an opportunity to discuss at length the recommendations that are presented?
Absolutely.
My concern is, my concern is that we just, we sit through a presentation, but we really don't dig deep into the results or the recommendations. And I'd really like to, as a board, as a team, thoroughly go over those recommendations.
My goal would to have that, absolutely allow everyone here to dig into that, and the parents are going to ensure that they will have every opportunity to do the same thing. So without a doubt, you know, we're going to have that opportunity, and our parents are going to have full opportunity to look at that.
I think as a board, you have to decide and help guide, even though, because Patricia's coming back to do this work for us, what you want that to look like. Do you, you know, Patricia and I have talked about even ECMAC holding public hearings on the boundaries and the proposed additions, having board members attend and listen to that, and then maybe they go back to the drawing board and reconfigure what that recommendation is based on that, you know, that input from community, maybe do that a couple nights, and then bring a recommendation to the board. You still then turn around, you still may want to conduct your own kind of public input process as a board, given the final recommendation. And, and I know what you mean about Dean, it's a real shift for our school district here, because the board was more involved before. because the board was more involved before. But the flip side of that is we've got many more parents involved this time. And so it's a little bit of give and take. And then you've got Mike and Jim on there to be your representatives, to be that voice, to ensure just the things you're talking about will in fact occur. So we just haven't ferreted out that process yet at the end. Just want to make sure you're comfortable with getting it going. Then we can come back with, or ECHMAC can work on ideas of how are we going to get public voice in, in, in the room? And then the school board voice in, in a final decision format.
And I'll say, and if I learned anything, it was invite the community sooner rather than later. Because there's nothing worse than coming to a presentation with the feeling or the perception that this is a done deal. And, and you're either here to say, I like it, or you don't. So e- even if we're, pick a number sixty percent down the path and we think this is where we're going to head, then I would say have that first meeting to say, here's where we're at today. This is, this is what we're thinking, this is why. And now get that input. So then at least it, it's not the done, final, here's what we want to do, now give us feedback. I, I see it in the news, I don't care if it's the city, the state, the feds, doesn't usually go well.
Okay.
So we're all on board?
So yeah, we're okay to move forward? Yeah, I think we're all ready to go forward with the process.
Good. Alright, on to budget.
Thanks, Patricia.
Oh, the fun stuff.
It's more fun.
Too kidding.
It's more fun, she says.
So Dale Carlson, Carlstrom and Jeff Ansorge are going to join us at the table. Tonight, we're going to do this as a team. Kelly Benusa couldn't be with us tonight, so I'm going to try to fill in for her. So I will do my best. We're going to talk about the budget process in total. And then we'll just dig into a, a little bit using the basin tactics. So what you have is the timeline in front of you. And then you have four of those basin tactics documents. The blue is the general fund. The peach is food and nutrition services, which Jeff will take you through. The green is community service, which Brian Severson Hall will walk you through. And the final one is purple, the capital and the tech levy, which Dale Carlstrom will walk you through. And the idea tonight is to make sure that the board continues to support our process and direction. Our next meeting with budget managers is tomorrow. And we just want to be sure that we're checking in with the board regularly to remind you of our process and the parameters that we've been working under. So the first document is this budget timeline, should be in your packet. There's a couple of things I just want to remind you of. So we're partway down, the beginning, we're on November thirteenth, the school board work sessions. And so previous to this, we have set the preliminary levy, which helps begin to set some of the revenue for fiscal year 2020. And we have already met with budget managers, which we foreshadowed with the board on Sept-, on, in September as well. We set direction for the budget managers, as has been usual for the last couple of years, that there are no increases in the budget. And I'll talk through some of that when we, when we go through basin tactics. Like I said, we're meeting with budget managers tomorrow. And then the next times we'll be back with the board, that will have some impact on our results for next year, is the audit results will be coming to you at the end of November. So that, we will finally have our, have closed our books on last year. You've been, that's been foreshadowed for you. We don't anticipate any change to what Kelly already presented on that. And then we will be back again in December to set the final levy. So then we can really work solidly forward on revenue. Our budget managers will continue to work. We'll pull together our community team in January, as usual, our L- long-range financial planning and fiscal team, which has some community members to work through our pair proposals, our budget adjustment proposals. And then we'll be in, with the board in February and March. Now, last year, we did all of those, all of our funds together in one meeting. We might be able to accomplish that this year. We just don't want to promise anything yet. We'll be working toward doing everything in February. And then we'll work out the details of the line item budget and the board will make a final approval on the budget in June. So that's the process ahead of us. So now I just want to walk you through these basin tactics. I will do the general fund first. And what I'll do is sort of set up the format of these, because the format is, is the same for all of the funds. So the first one we're looking at is the blue basin tactics. This is the general operating and transportation fund. And so going across, we have several years presented. There's a couple of historical years, two thousand fifteen through now, what we know is the actual two thousand eighteen. We've got the current year's adopted budget and then four years of projection. And then going down the side, what these line items represent are first, we have some base, a baseline. So some assumptions that we've made about how we see revenues and expenditures moving if we had no other intervention. And then at the bottom, that's gray, we show some tactics. So how might either the legislature or, or we intervene with budget cuts or other revenues that could be generated to change what might have occurred in the baseline? So that's what you're looking at here. So if I go back up to the top, in the blue area for, for the general fund, the baseline revenues are really just influenced by what we know our revenue projections, our, our enrollment projections to be. That's the main thing that influences revenue. And on the expenditure side, we have a baselined expenditure trend that was built on history that says expenditures will grow at three point seven, at a rate of three point seven five percent a year. So that's how the baseline is built. Within tactics, we make some adjustments. So the first tactical adjustment is that we assume a one percent increase in the basic funding formula for each biennium. So that might be better or worse than that in reality, but that's as, as much as we wanted to build into our tactics. So that, those are built in for the next two bienniums, which are unknown. We also have some tactics, a tactic related to expenditures, that we will reduce our trend to three point two five percent. So while the historical trend had been three point seven five, we have a commitment. And those aren't budget cuts, those are just belt tightening to make sure we keep our expenditures from growing at that fast of a pace. And our budgets have actually come in at less than three point two five percent in the last couple of years. So that's the, another tactic that we've been working with. So then I want to talk to you about a couple of things that have changed since the last time you saw this document. And that was in September. So two things that we know now that we didn't know then. We have on the line, the two point five three million. So if you go under the projected 2020, under a levy adjustments, there's an increase in revenue of two million, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Does everybody see that? All that is, is what we know were adjustments in the levy for taxes payable in 2019. So because of increased enrollment that we didn't know about when we were setting levies a year in advance of the actual year, there were adjustments that we talked about that in the September preliminary levy. I'll talk to you about it a little bit later tonight. So that's something that we now know. The other thing, if you go just a few lines down, under tactics related to expenditures, we now know about some, some enrollment increases over the last two years that have come to fruition. And so this anticipates spending some of that revenue, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, some portion of that to attend to classroom teachers. Otherwise, we're, we'd be making a budget cut by, by increasing class size. So as enrollment grows, we have to put some of that, that enrollment growth revenue toward expenditures for classroom teachers. So those are two changes that are in this document that weren't here in September. The other thing I want to just draw your attention to is at the very bottom, left-hand corner, and this will be the same for all, all of the budgets you see. There's a percentage of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And we have different, this one is a board established parameter in policy that we will maintain at least a five percent fund balance. Other funds have fund balance percentages that they have established with the main budget manager. So then if you draw your eyes across the document, you can see that what we are trying to do is to maintain at least a five percent fund balance. So way out to the right, by fiscal year 2023, the fund balance will be at five percent, five point zero four percent. And we accomplished that toward the end of this projected timeline through budget cuts. So if you work your way up and you see two budget cuts, three million dollars and five million dollars. So we're projecting that by 2022, we'd have to cut three million dollars and in 2023, five million dollars to maintain that five percent fund balance. What we know is that we generally end our fiscal years better than our projections. And so between now and the adopted budget, we will be making a mid-year adjustment for this year. Often that improves our budget results, not always. But you could anticipate that so that we can continue to push off that time of budget cuts. That dollar amount was reduced since the last time you saw this. Last time we looked at it, we thought we'd be reducing ten million in those last two years. Now we're down to eight million. So that continues to improve over time. There's no way to get around numbers like that in a general fund. I just, you just don't see that. If you look far enough out, that's why we do it. So that we can make, and have influence on it and impact it by then. And the last thing I just want to remind you is through the board's intervention, we added this line that shows us where, where we are at with our operating referendum timeline. It's important for two reasons. One is we want to make sure we renew it in a timely way. And secondly, it could be a tactic related to revenue, that if we wanted to ask our voters to approve an increase in the operating referendum, we know the timing for that. So those, those are years of our current operating referendum. It's been approved for ten years, which is the limit. That's the maximum voter approval. And where it says GE, those are years of general election dates. So that's the general fund. So what we are moving forward with in the general fund are no increases in expenditures, with the exception of those that might be related to growing enrollment for teach, classroom teachers. Any questions? We'll just keep moving through these.
And what is our leverage typically on enrollment increase? So we get ten new kids, you know, that's a hundred grand from the state roughly. You know, a teacher fully loaded is that, but you know, the average class size is twenty-five. So as we grow, growth, getting more students to come back in, offering the right programs to gain more students is something that is a tactic that I don't necessarily see on here to increase enrollment to gain additional funds and margin that pays for the rest of the programs.
No, I was going to say, you can, we can, we can list it as a tactic. But you have to turn around then also probably and think about doing some expenditures and marketing, which, you know, you got to, you know, balance that off and then make sure that the, the drawdown of the, of the, of the revenue isn't consumed by, you know, marketing efforts to bring in those additional kids. And the other flip side is we, we also have to have the space for them.
Right, absolutely.
And so, you know, it, it's okay to have, even if you're thinking of open enrollment, Mike, to bring in additional kids as long as you have the space for them.
Or stop losing our own.
Or, or stop losing, but even, even if we were to bring in those, whatever our retention, increase our retention rate by, let's say from seventy to eighty percent, you have to have room for those kids. So that means you're going to probably go out and ask for a larger bond issue in two years. Nothing wrong with that, but I'm just, there's a flip side of that coin we always have to be, you know, cognizant of or aware of too.
So using Patricia's, one of her favorite words, I'm foreshadowing the fact that as we have discussed in the past, in this group, about making improvements to our curriculum and adding to our curriculum trades, what Osseo High School wants to do and, and what other schools are doing, that, you know, those are tactics to gain more students to come in and to stay. So yes, that we, and we have discussed the need that if we are going to look at expanding our high schools down the road, that more, you know, the improvement in retention rate based upon developing different curricula and trades programs needs to go into that. And, and you're absolutely right, it is a trade-off. How do we gain more of our students? How do we serve more of our population? What will it take to do that? So, but that is something that, you know, one in business would consider a tactic, gain more customers that, that we're not, you know, necessarily putting down and writing in here. But it is something we've discussed as, as a board and as a cabinet, at least over the last two years. So that's something to keep in mind as, as we do look at, into the future.
Patricia, could you remind me, what has the legislature approved the past few years? Because I know this is done with the assumption of a one percent increase.
Yes, and this is a one percent increase for a biennium. So it's a very conservative assumption. The last was two and two.
Well, I thought, okay, that's where I thought it was, okay.
So then we will move on to the food nutritious service fund. Have you folks all met? Jeff Ansorge, our new director of food and nutrition services.
Hi, I'm Jeff Ansorge, started July, taking Tom Pellegrino's place. Just want to quick review the food service fund. It's not a part of the general fund, it's Fund Two, so it's a self-supporting fund. We have, we operate twenty-six sites with food service, about a hundred and seventy employees. We serve breakfast and lunch. We have some summer programming and some after-school snack and supper programming. And our breakfast counts are about five thousand five hundred on a day, a daily basis. Lunches are about fourteen thousand five hundred, a little background information. And then with the baseline and tactics, if you're looking at the baseline revenues, just a little historical data from two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and eighteen on revenues for that four-year period, we've shown about a thirteen point four percent increase in revenue over that four-year period. And projection for 2020 with tactics, we continue to see it increase. And I think that trend will continue throughout 2020. Expenditures on the baseline from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen actual, we've seen expenditures increase approximately nine percent over that four-year period. So you continually see the revenues outpacing the expenditures, which is a good scenario. And I think that scenario will continue on to 2020 and into the future as well. And as far as the fund balance, so our net cash balance basically, that's for the past three years has grown significantly. You see in two thousand and fifteen, that fund balance was three million, just over three million. And actual two thousand and eighteen was three million seven, well, actually, the end of the year was four million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand. And I continue to see that growing as well as a trend into adopted two thousand and nineteen and the two thousand and twenty dropping a bit. One thing with fund balance though, with Minnesota Department of Education, they have a, they have, they limit our net cash resources on hand to three months of average expenditures. And those three months of average expenditures are not taken from a twelve-month year, or twelve, twelve months from the year. They're divided by a nine-month year, not taking summer into account. So that cap really, if you're looking at our actual of two thousand and eighteen, being an end of four million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, we're actually exceeded that cap, where that cap should be at four million, one hundred and seventy thousand. So we've got a hundred and ninety-three thousand, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, basically that we're in excess according to MDE regulations. So we need to take a look at that and how we're going to spend that money so that we're within those guidelines. And I believe that downplayed projection of the fund balance in 2020 is going to keep us right on line where we need to be actually. So we're not in excess of that three-month expenditure regulation with MDE. And then looking at the tactics, tactics for increased revenues, really over the past decade, looking at history, we've had approximately a two percent increase in reimbursement rates through the federal government for our breakfast and lunch programs. And we foresee that happening as well in two thousand and twenty projections. And then another way of increased revenues is through increased participation, which I think comes through service quality and food quality, which is a driver as well. And then as far as operational reductions or the expenditures, as Patricia stated, we're looking at about a three percent, three point seven five percent increase in expenditures. And that's due to inflation, food costs, fuel costs, et cetera. And we have that projected as well in 2020. And with the board set a five percent of fund balance really, we, prior to me, Patricia and I think the food service team had established a twelve percent. And that twelve percent set at about one million, six hundred thousand roughly is probably a little more than one month. And that 12% set at about 1,600,000 roughly is probably a little more than one month's expenditures. So looking at 2020, the projection for our fund balance is 33.1%. And I think that we're gonna be right on track with about a 33.3% for our fund balance, which will put us right on that threshold of a three-month expenditure cap through MDE. That's all I have for you. Do you have questions?
So right now, our capture rate is about 66% for lunch. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, I've seen, I've seen lower 70% when I was looking at the data earlier this week. But yeah, high 60s, low 70s for participation.
Yeah, 14.5 out of 21, yeah, somewhere in there.
Yep.
Okay. And revenues are strictly coming from payments and reimbursements? No levy, no taxes that are going into this?
Correct. Payments, reimbursements, à la carte, catering functions, things like that.
Okay.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Very much. I learned something that I don't think I ever learned from Tom, and that's how the fund balance is calculated through MDE. So thank you for that information.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it would seem that they don't want us to have good fiscal sanity in having cash on hand. It doesn't sound right.
Yeah, I think, I think the purpose of it is, because we're a nonprofit, is to take that profit and put it back into the program to improve it. That's, that's what I kinda gather from it. Improve services, improve equipment, things like that.
Equipment doesn't come out of this revenue.
Actually, yeah, it does, actually. So our capital expenditures that are listed there, one thing that's unique to our fund is that we are able to pay for our own equipment, walk-in coolers, dishwashers, et cetera.
So basically, you're, you're the CEO of a $14 million business.
You could look at it that way.
And he makes a good lunch, too.
Mike, I was gonna throw a little humor, you're saying you're looking for fiscal guidance from the feds?
Yeah, yeah. Never mind. I won't ask. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
So then we're onto Brian, food service.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Brian, I'm with Community Education. And so we wanna go over the Fund Four, which is similar to what Jeff described as Fund Two. We're a self-supporting fund area for the school district. And you can kinda see, and some of you know this story, but we're really on like a six-year growth pattern in Fund Four. So we've had a real enjoyable six years of adding programming and seeing some increases in what we're doing. So you can see on the very upper left of your sheet that in 2015, we ended the year with 15,056,000 in revenue. And this past year, we ended at 18,977,219, right? So we've grown our revenue over $4 million in the last four years, right? So it has been pretty rapid growth. Probably the three legs of the stool for our growth have been additional state and federal funding, primarily around early childhood and a little bit with our 21st Century program, which has grown quite a bit as well. We've been responsive to changes in our school district and to requests from community members. So a lot of you remember when we changed our grade spans. Community Ed went ahead and took advantage of that timeframe to expand out-of-school time opportunities for middle school students, right? Because we had a lot of parents give us feedback that, hey, my sixth graders, we're a little nervous about them going from elementary school to junior high, right? So we, we switched that up and kids participated, right? And then we have a, we've had really great participation rates in all the programs that we're offering. Another thing we changed that year on grade span change is drivers out of the high schools, right? So we've been responsive to, and that particular item came up through DPAC, if I remember correctly, a request through there. So that's the growth. So we just missed going over 19 million in revenue. I was hoping it was gonna happen this last year, but I think it will happen next year. And just some general reminders about our Fund Four area. Approximately 70% of our revenue comes from participation fees, right? This is really broad, high level on how I think about our revenue. About 20% of it comes from state aid, which primarily funds our adult basic education programming. And 10% approximately is, is federal. We sometimes have a little smaller grants that we go after, but those are the big buckets. So really, the vast majority of our revenue is through participation fees of the programs that we offer with some state and federal support for some programs that we do. And just like Jeff was talking a little bit about fund balance targets, I believe on your sheet on the bottom left, it talks about 7% budgeted projected expenditures minimum. So that's our minimum. I actually often describe it also our maximum. So I think some of you know I'm a big Price is Right fan, right? So think the rangefinder game, right? So my range is the 7 to 15% is what I'm trying to hit. And my ration, and that's not any regulation, right? That's just my framework for, as a community ed director. Keeping it above 7% allows us to take some entrepreneurial chances on programs to offer them. So if they don't go, it's not the end of the world for our program, you know? And then I tend to talk about 15% as a cap for us because I believe if we get much more above that, we're probably priced a little too high, right? I think we could bring down our fees if we get a little above that. You'll notice that at the end of this year, we're actually at 15.57, which you're not gonna win the prize on Price is Right, right? On the rangefinder game. So we're a little above my recommended range. But some of that is due to, we held off two years ago on some of our early childhood programings while we established the voluntary pre-K programming. So you're gonna see a little bit of an adjustment on that fund balance in the next two years as we activate some of our programs that we held off on while we were kinda seeing where we would land with VPK. So those are some of the, well, those are the way we are structured as community ed. It's also a way that I think about how we do our budget and how we generate programming for community members, students, youth and adults. And we're thrilled that, that we've had such high participation rates in the last handful of years and that the programs that we've responded from the community, they've actually did sign up when they've recommended add these things and we offered it, it's happening. So we're pleased with, with all of those, all those factors. So that would be my report. So I don't know if there's any questions or CPAC member would wanna add anything? Mike's on our CPAC team.
So how much of this increase in revenue has come from competing with our constituent cities? And they offer everything at the community centers in Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park and Maple Grove and Plymouth and everywhere else, Dayton, Corcoran, Rogers. So how are we competing against their programs that they also fund if we're expanding? I know this was a concern a couple of years ago, I've sat in on the meetings.
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't be able to give you an exact dollar amount, Mike. I think that might be tough. Now, we, the last year, so there's a couple of ways that we think about that and we work with our city partners on it, right? So we don't have anything that's set in stone. But in general, we have tended to focus on youth programming. So we've done some things with the city of Maple Grove, for instance, this past two years, where if there's going to be some youth enrichment opportunities, we do everything we can to offer it from like the 2 to 5 o'clock time slot and they offer it at the later in the evening slot. So there's, we, that's one way we try to avoid some duplication. I don't always automatically think duplication's a bad word if there's enough demand, right? Where duplication is bad to me is if we're all competing for the same people and that we have an excess of programs versus if we had, we offered, if all of us offered youth enrichment and all of us were filling the classes, then we still might not be meeting the demand. So that's one way that I think about it. We've also done a look, some general agreements around like sports leagues, for example, right? So you don't see me in community ed running adult basketball leagues or adult volleyball leagues, for example. So those would be some ideas off the top of my head from your question on where we've tried to limit so-called competition or duplication is another word that I use for competition.
Have we had any feedback from the constituent cities saying, hey, you're hurting our own programs?
We haven't. We tend to, it's been more the opposite, actually. We do get together often during the year to talk about these things. That's where some of these agreements with when we're offering or where we're offering have come through. So I think there's, I would say those have come out about, more about because we partner annually with these groups versus out of a concern. But I, we're, we have close enough relationships with these park and recs and other associations that we, we just go ahead and put it on the table and talk through it. You know, what are you, what are you doing for offerings? What are you thinking? What are some areas that you think are potential growth that you might do, that we might do? So we, we tend to have those conversations. And that was, that did surface in, through the advisory council and it continues to be examined.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're working with them, so you don't duplicate services and you do have a good working relationship?
Yeah.
So how does that work with all of the daycare providers?
Yeah.
That the 37 independently owned small businessmen in our communities who are in the same position as the cities, as you just discussed, but they seem to be losing a lot of, of their business to the school district, a nonprofit organization that uses their tax dollars to fund the buildings and everything else that they use. So it seems like there's, we're working with them differently. How, why is that?
Yeah, we haven't done as much work with our childcare providers in the community. So I think you could say that there is some competition. They haven't necessarily approached us. Only a couple of folks I've talked to through, well, actually a member of ECMAC. Back when I was on ECMAC, we had this discussion, he was a childcare provider. So we, that conversation hasn't happened as often or as frequently. And I don't, so I know that, Mike, you and I have talked about that and you've expressed your perspective around government agency or a school competing with private entities, right? So I've heard that. The approach that I tend to take is, this is how, this is what the state legislature has funded for us in community ed. And so I'm doing my best to execute that. It doesn't mean that you can't, we can't examine it, but that's, that would be my perspective on how we're currently working in that environment. And I get the competing interests. I think some folks on this table know that for eight years, I was the executive director of the Minnesota Association for the Education of Young Children, which works with family childcare providers, for-profit center-based providers and school-based providers. So needless to say, I was in many, a discussion when you have all those people in the same room at the same time, right? So I get the competing interests in this particular field. Right now, I just happen to be running those programs on the school-based side, right? I wasn't always in that situation.
I think, I think, I think choice is great for families and families can choose what works for them. I just wanted to say thank you because since you've come on board in the district, we've had rapid growth and expansion. And I know like our summer freedom schools, there's just been a lot of popular programs.
Yeah.
So thank you for that work and...
Thank you.
I just wanna echo what Jessica was saying. I think that that's really, especially with the middle-level programming, that's humongous. I mean, the way that they're growing and it was just something that didn't exist before. So I feel like that's really huge. And then, Mike, to your point about the, especially private daycares, I would say both it's competing, but also we don't have enough even private daycares. We just don't have enough childcare for our area. I'm, I'm a former daycare provider and I'm constantly being asked, do you know of anybody who has openings? And I don't. So I think, I think it's kind of, we're just short on good childcare for our kids, period, in our district. But I really, really appreciate the work that you've done for especially our middle grades because that's with the grade span change and sixth graders kind of, a lot of times aren't mature enough to be at home on their own after school or in between, you know, summer programming and those special one-day programs that we have during breaks and things like that. It's really important for those maturity level. They need that in that sense of community, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We had great attendance. Our kids stop on Election Day, by the way. Just, that's a bonus to the...
And I think that was even the same, but, you know, so. No, you know, my kids learn to drive through, you know, the partnership with the school, which has made it easier, so.
Yeah, definitely.
So some of those programs, I'd fully support.
Yeah, I think sometimes we forget, you know, once they reach a certain age, you think, okay, they're good. But they're not always in having that segue and especially for our kids who aren't maybe as outgoing and need that extra bit of community during those times where there's no school.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick programming question?
Sure.
So the intermediate 287 school board has been doing a book study and one of our most recent books was on childhood trauma. And so as I've learned more on that board, do we have any programming around childhood trauma? Would it be something that we could think about? The word we hear in the news is the high-level mental health. And so within trauma, you know, it could be death in the family. It could be witnessing a pretty horrific event. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of, I think the resources are out there, but the high-level broad-based information, as I watch the news and consume news, I'll hear it in bits and pieces, maybe on the news, maybe on Channel 2. But there doesn't seem to be any avenue for the average person to go out and get some information. And so just kinda planting a seed, you know, even if we hit it at the high level and then let the mental health professionals get into the heavy-duty stuff, but...
Yeah, that's a, no, that's a great idea for, that's a potential thing you could gather people around, right? I believe our schools do a lot of trauma-informed practices with youth, but that's different than giving the resources to a parent or guardian, right? Which is what I hear you saying a little bit, Dean. So that could be something we could explore for adult enrichment offering or partnering with other groups to gather folks together. I know when I worked in Wayzetta, we had some times where some of the counselors put together like a Saturday morning thing for families that had a variety of topics, right? Didn't, didn't, wasn't necessarily about mental health at that time, but it was just different topics. Kinda like a youth and, or adult enrichment jamboree Saturday kinda thing, you know what I mean? That's not the exact title. That's the best thing I came up with. It'll be better by tomorrow. But like, there's, so there's, you know, those are, and that's what I mean by responsiveness, right? So when we, when we both do surveys of folks or talk to people as they exit our opportunities, whether they're youth or adults, we ask those kinda things. What are things that are pertinent to you, right? And that's how we end up adding stuff, right? So that, that's a great idea.
And I share that because at 287, I have the same questions for, for that group of staff. I mean, most all of you know we, we're in the consortium with 287 and they serve a lot of Osseo's high-need students. And so there are great pockets of knowledge within these educational institutions. It doesn't necessarily have to be kind of the full-blown medical, you know, perspective, but at least to give people, you know, the information, you know, a child has a parent die in a, in a car accident. What does that look like at home? How does that show up in school? Because if the school isn't aware of it, sometimes these trauma events can show up in school. And if you don't know the student really well or know that they see that happen, you're thinking, well, Dean's acting out in class today because he's just not paying attention. Well, no, something pretty significant happened. And so as the adults are aware of it, the more we can share it with the people in our community, then they can become more knowledgeable.
Thank you.
I mean, some of that in the past, we have done partnerships with the county, which provides a lot of that mental health programming, correct?
High-level, I don't wanna throw the county under the bus, but as they work on their budgets, sometimes their resources get pulled back. And so sometimes the agreements that we had years ago that were maybe really robust, maybe they're not as robust as they were three years ago. And they're pulled in many different directions, you know, just like the schools are. So I kinda look at it as who's ever got the knowledge, you know, the practice. We do the practice day in and day out. At least share what we know and maybe new partnerships can come together. I mean, I see it on the news, when I watch it, there's events that have... it, there's events that happen frequently and the broad word you hear is, oh, it's, you know, we're not sure how this person fell through the cracks. They could be four years old, they could be twenty-four years old, but we're all kind of looking for answers to the same question.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Board members and cabinet members. I'm Dale Carlstrom, Director of Facilities and Transportation Operations. And what I'm going to talk about this evening is the capital, operating capital budget. And just a disclaimer, when the facility guys talk about capital budget, it's not about facilities, it's about operating capital. So this is everybody in the, in the system. We all get together and what we manage is a zero-based budget and we have a process whereby we submit our plans and our plans are reviewed by the, all the system budget managers. And we compare our interests and our needs. And our team's budget managers review the submissions and we explain our requests to each other in a, in a comprehensive way and show how they are related to our strategic objectives and mission. And then we balance those projects to the, to the budget that we're going to be going over this evening. The capital projects are, capital budget is flat largely from, from previous years. The increases you'll see are from what, something that was in the early, or earlier presentation from Patricia where we've got a proposed fifteen million dollar facilities improvement budget that would increase our capital expenditures by that, if you look down in the tactics section that we talked about earlier, the gray section, that one-point-three million dollars, that would be the principal and interest on that proposed improvements to those facilities. Also, in that same section, you can see a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase and that is a redistribution of surplus from previous years where our, but we had a budget surplus at the end of the fiscal in eighteen. There's also some increases due to salary and benefit, that three-point-two-five percent increase, as well as some roll-ups from enrollment alignments where we get more students and we contribute more capital for the, to support those kids. The, the budget process that we're going through is kind of getting underway tomorrow, actually. And we're, we're meeting together and we're going to be going over, as I mentioned earlier, those, those projects that each of our departments are, are trying to push forward to support our, our mission. So the other thing that I didn't talk about is the surplus and our target is ten percent. And we're well over that right now at a projected twenty-four percent. But we're spending that down as part of our tactics and trying to head toward that ten percent. The one other thing that we do in this process of capital budget management is to develop a five-year plan, not just a one-year plan. So we're pushing it out five years so that we can start projecting out where we're headed, lumps, bumps, and what we might need to purchase down the road for operations. And I think that's a great improvement we've added in the past four, five years. So it's, that's capital for you? Is there any questions?
All right. So we'll continue to move forward with our budget development and we'll be back in February with more information about the budget. The next thing I want to do is to spend a little time on the levy, not very much time. This is, should be very familiar to you, these next, I'm not going to go through all of these pages, but I just want to show the board the final levy that will be coming before you in December. It's changed a little bit. Since the preliminary levy, it's gone down a little, a little bit. The, the dollar amount that we knew in September, because that, that meeting was so early in September, we hadn't finalized everything, was increasing by seven-point-three-seven percent. We're now at seven-point-three-two percent. Just a couple of things changed. So if you go to the, the second page, things that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that changed. So there was a tiny little change in the levy amount for alternative teacher compensation. That's because it's a prorated allocation. Now that there are so many districts involved, so the state just kept changing the proration amount all the way through September, so it adjusted it very slightly. So that's a little bit of a change. And then on the, the third page, there were some changes within the debt service fund. For some minor adjustments, because we were holding funding for these bond issuances that you just approved, we wanted to be sure that we were holding sufficient fund balance. So we worked with the Department of Ed. Again, really minor adjustments, about ten thousand dollars is all. So they were very small changes. Those are the kinds of things that we worked through with the department as we worked towards September thirtieth, just so you know what's coming forward. I also want to point out on the second page of this document, the line item that's highlighted in gray and bold outlined, that's the line where the building leases reside. So that's where we have included the impact, the one-point-three million dollars of principal and interest in that first year, if the board approves the, the funding within the, within the levy. So that would keep capital projects on the table as one of our solutions. So that's, that will come before the board in September, or in December. So I just want to be clear that that's included in here again in December. The other thing, we're starting to work with the county and with our financial advisor to start to understand the tax impact. And I just wanted to foreshadow for the board that this seven-point-three-two percent increase in the, in the tax levy, a median-valued home in Osseo area schools is about two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. And so we can preliminarily, I'll know more in December when we're here for the final hearing, that's eight dollars and seventy-two cents a year on that median-valued home.
That's not taking into account the growth over the, over the last year in housing starts?
In their, in their individual. That would include the increase in the full denominator. What it wouldn't entail is any increase in that individual value.
Okay.
The biggest increase in our tax levy for next year is the operating rate. It's growing rapidly due to our enrollment growth. It's been growing over the last three or four years. So that's just to help you to be prepared. And our question on that item is, would, will the board need anything else to be prepared to make a decision to set the final levy in December?
I just want to share a personal piece on, so the, the first line, the referendum levy authority. I know that's increase in market value, but it also, it also contains the inflationary language we had in the levy. And so I'm, knowing how we finished twenty-eighteen growing our fund balance, I'm less inclined to say we need to do the max levy with that inflation piece. It's kind of, I, I think the inflation, don't quote me on this, I think it was around a million dollars. And so my, my preference would be since we did better than budgeted last year and we added dollars to the fund balance, to give our taxpayers a small break on that inflationary piece. So that would be my, my preference. The others I fully understand. Some of them are leveraging dollars, some of them are paying for things. So it was just that one piece with the levy inflation that if we could hold that at zero, I would appreciate.
So what is the breakdown of that four million between the inflationary increase and the student ratio, the number of student increase?
Oh, I'd have to do some calculating on that.
And it, and...
I think you want to do some calculating before you...
It's all kind of woven together.
Well, I mean, one percent, one percent of three-point-five million is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. So if it's three percent, it's, you know, a million fifty thousand. So if it's, you know, if it turns into that. And inflation is probably around three percent. So you're right, it's probably around a million. And the rest of that, though, is driven by increase in, in the...
Value in students, yep, yep. So I'm just putting that out there as an interest.
Sure.
How much did the county approve? Henepin County?
Henepin County's increase?
Yeah.
I don't know. Eight, ten percent?
We don't know. We don't know.
They're a little less fiscally sound. School-age care levy, that's going up by two-hundred thousand? And, and why is that?
Yep. So that's our levy to support students with special needs or needing extra service. We have not, we have not yet maximized that levy. This, of the three school districts I've been in, this is the only school district that didn't automatically max that for school-age care. But we do, it, it's based on, we, we essentially track students that we're giving additional support to in Kid Stop. And then we have that dollar amount reflected in what we request so that it's matching the services that we provide. So that's the tactic that the school district has taken and that's what that levy represents.
So we are now maximizing it? Or did the limit go up?
This levy would match the, the true expenditures.
We would, yeah.
We've finally reached that point.
Okay.
We've been working toward it for three or four years.
Well, serving those kids anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, we have to expend the funds either way.
It has been the last four years. But yeah, Patricia's right. Before, we weren't using the levy to fully cover the costs that we expended. We were taking it out of general fees of the program. So this, this way, we're, we're utilizing the levy that's available to us.
So for, help me understand, Kid Stop is voluntary for parents?
It is.
And so we're not necessarily passing on the true cost to the parents. We're putting it back on the taxpayers. They've made a choice to not go to a private. They've come here, but we're not, we are not covering, they are not covering their costs. Is that it?
Are you, oh, oh, yeah.
To the tune of a million dollars. I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. You're saying this is Kid Stop funding, Kid Stop, parents pay. So why are we going to the taxpayers on this?
Can I jump in? I thought I heard you say special needs students?
Correct.
So we, we may have students that a private daycare may not be able to serve. I'm theorizing. And so if you're a working parent and you have one of those students, you may not have a lot of options. That, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. And technically, it's called extended day disabilities levy, right? So that might give you a better, that might be a better descriptor of it than what we have on here now.
Okay.
But yeah, you're, you're right. And I would say also from my perspective, you're, there are some options, this, so just kind of hear me out, to not serve kids, right? The good news is, over the last decade and a half, now that this levy has been put in place, this has provided school-based programs to better serve students with special needs who previously would often not be allowed into the program, which sounds really weird coming from a school district, right? Because we're, we're used to serving all students all the time. And that tends to be what parents' expectations were when they would sign up for an after-school program provided by the school, right? But, so these dollars have given programs the ability to provide extra training for staff, to help serve students' medical needs after school and in the summer, and also to provide some support to some students who might need additional assistance after school. Because we know the after-school environment's different than this, during the school day environment, right? So some kids that struggle during the school day do great after-school programs. Some kids that do well during the school day have a heck of a time in a full, fully more social setting. So some of these dollars have helped with exactly what Dean just said, right? To, to make sure that our school-based programs are serving all kids.
So how many more kids does this enable?
Oh, I'd have to look back and ask on how many students we pull on that count. I can get back to the board on that one.
Can I piggyback on that? I mean, my, my perception over the years of being on the board is, this is my broad paintbrush. The state is mandated by statute to do education. They haven't always, in my opinion, fully met that. And so they'll say, here's school districts, here's this levy authority that you have. You can levy for this, you can levy for that. So we, we won't make that hard decision. We won't spend the dollars from our general fund, from the general taxpayers in general. But if, if you can levy it within your own community, then you can provide the service. So they are passing their responsibility on to us, the, the local school district and the local taxpayers. So, so while it's still theoretically taxed dollars, it, it's coming from the local level versus from the state level where it could be sales tax, property tax, income tax.
Yeah, but I think you're conflating mandatory in-school mandated programs versus voluntary after-school and preschool programs. This levy is just for those voluntary programs. And we do have a twenty-million-dollar funding gap that the state mandates certain services. We spend forty, they give us twenty.
Yep.
So that's, that is a significant issue that needs to be fixed at the legislature. But those are two different items. One's mandatory in-school by legislation.
I understand, but...
So, so no, I just don't want people to be confused. This one is, yes, they are providing us the ability, the levy to, to address that on a voluntary basis. The other one, we are told we must do this. So there, there are two different things there.
I, I fully understand. And so, you know, having served on two-eight-seven's board, there are students with truly special needs that could be a single-parent household, it could have two parents, you could even have an extended family. Some of their needs are far beyond what I can even comprehend. And so if it's a program that we can provide within the school, even though it may be voluntary after school, then, then it's a service we can provide within our community. Otherwise, there may not, there may not be any other service available. And the parent or parents may be home, not working. So it's kind of the balance of, you know, how can we meet the, the needs of...
These parents are still paying the tuition.
Absolutely.
We're just providing an additional support.
Piece on top of that, yeah.
For our child.
That's a good way of saying it.
Yeah. I mean, that's why I like to know if it's a thousand kids or ten kids. And yeah, if the name of the levy was actually put down as it is, that would have eliminated most of this discussion.
Yeah. It's an easier explanation to, it's more, yeah, the way it used to be termed is a little more readily understandable, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. When you start me down the road of questioning, what does this mean? Then we open up a can of worms. But, yeah, the, the name, the, the name of the levy sounds reasonable for what it does. So I have no issues with that.
We'll be back in December. We take a recess, Mr. Chair, for five, ten minutes and then regroup.
Okay, that'll be fine. We're in recess. We're in recess.
And it's the only time, even though it, only your action can hire an employee, you, really, this is the only employee that you are just intimately involved with in hiring. And obviously, whoever you hire is going to help set the, the district direction and, and where, um, this district will head in the next maybe five, ten years, uh, potentially. So it is a real important task, and it rests on your shoulders. And I'll come back to that topic. I would like to, um, create a little sense of urgency. I know last year, when you went through this process, you went through a fairly typical process. You had a lot of steps. You had to collect, you know, s- uh, staff and community input to build your profile. And then you went through that whole, kind of what I call more of the search process, the interviewing and, and, you know, vetting candidates and all that. And I think that coupled with the timeline you had last year, it just didn't come together at the end where all six members of the board were comfortable moving forward. And I, I know that, um, at the time, it was, uh, frustrating for the community, for the staff, for you as board members. But, um, we're here to begin anew, all right? And that's what's important right now. I wanted to wait, uh, as board members know, until after the elections so that the newly-elected people could appropriately engage. Uh, we'll, you'll be seating Jackie here at the next meeting on the twenty-seventh. And, uh, Kelsey and Tanya will have to participate from the, 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 uh...
Front row seat.
The, the public area. But we'll, we'll have them engage appropriately, um, because technically, they're not school board members until January. The other thing I wanted to say about this sense of urgency is that a year ago, you had twenty-eight applications for your position. And I've been around long enough, and it's not just because I have gray hair or a lack of hair, I can tell you very sincerely that, that twenty-five years ago, you would have had over a hundred applications for the position. That was pretty common twenty-five years ago. Even greater Minnesota districts were getting sixty-five, eighty, ninety applications to be a superintendent. And it just has changed. The, the quantity of people and the quality of the application pool has significantly reduced, and you experienced that last spring. And that's why I think we need to get going as quickly as we possibly can uh, so that we don't lose, uh, candidates along the trail. And last time, that happened to you in your search. In the initial stages and in the last stage, uh, you lost another candidate. So I think it's important that we move quickly, not without, you know, planfulness, okay? But that we move quickly. The vacancies that are available right now in Minnesota, uh, in the metro area, uh, St. Francis, uh, position closes this week, district just to the north of us, a smaller district. Uh, Rosemont Apple Valley, which is a little larger district, a week ago named their interim superintendent to be their ongoing superintendent. And that didn't surprise me, um, from the standpoint that they've gone inside their system the last two times. Um, and before that, their outside candidate who, who was there for a few years, there was just some complications with that. And I think the board has felt better trying to groom some people from inside the system. But that was their choice. In greater Minnesota right now, there's only two small school districts that have openings. It's War Road, so if you want to go up to the frozen tundra. My grand, my grandmother and my mother, uh, my mother grew up in Roseville, so it's not too far from there. So I can, I can say those things and get away with it, but, um... And then Staples, which is a community just to the west and north of St. Cloud area. But what I will tell you is there'll be other openings, uh, guaranteed. I would say in greater Minnesota, you'll see fifteen to twenty openings. And I'm always surprised, and as I look around the metro area right now, someone will change a job or move, or something will happen, and there'll be a couple surprises that'll crop up even in the metro area. That will, another reason for us to get in front of the search process curve, uh, as we work through this. The third thing I would make a comment to you is it's, this task is going to be time-consuming. And the one I drew up for you tonight, and I obviously haven't, I don't have your feedback yet, and this is all going to change more than likely. But i- i- if we want to do it right, it's going to take a lot of time. And you have to be ready to, to give that time. And I mean, not just the three of you here, maybe Dean on the sideline, but the three out in the audience also, uh, this evening. After Thanksgiving, we have three work sessions set up. Twenty-eighth, the fourth, and then a backup one on the, uh, December eleventh. We, we need to be in attendance, and we need to work through those agendas, whatever they are. The next time-consuming part of the search will be once candidates have been ready to be presented to the board and the community. And we'll have several nights in a row. And those of you who were on the board last time, and Dean, you've been on, uh, previous search processes here, it gets to be one night after another, and you have to be ready for that kind of schedule. And then I would submit to you that even when we're done with the search process, you selected this new superintendent in the months, probably at the end of March, April, May, and in June, we'll want to have that person here as much as we can get them here so that you can start that transition process with them, transition as a board with three new elected members, and the planning process decide what, what are the goals for next year? What are the strategic priorities? And so that the staff and you are ready to go in July versus waiting for that person to arrive in, in July and then starting that whole process at that time. So with those things said, the importance of the task and a sense of urgency and time commitment, I'm going to turn the floor over to my colleague Barb, and she's going to go over, uh, kind of a quick review of, of last year's search process.
So board members, hopefully you saw, uh, the memo that just outlined four main parts of the work that you did last year. The first part was, uh, searching for a search firm. So you went through a process of putting out some RFPs, interviewing those three firms that did respond to the RFP, and selecting a search firm. You then, uh, met and officially kicked off the superintendent search, and you approved two key items, uh, which was the, which were the timeline that the search firm prepared, the timeline for the search, and the community engagement plan. And that was about gaining input from community members and staff about, uh, qualities they were seeking in the next superintendent that informed your development of the superintendent profile. The next big chunk of work was developing that superintendent profile through community engagement. And you'll remember that we did a variety of things. Combination of face-to-face meetings, online opportunities, small group, large group. All of that data was compiled and given to the, or sorry, was given to the search firm. They compiled it and analyzed it and came back to you and said, this is what your community is looking for. And that informed the development of the superintendent profile. You did approve the profile in late January that included the salary range. And we then moved forward and started placing advertisements in designated media announcing the position. The third, uh, key area of work was identifying finalists and conducting those, uh, public interviews. You'll remember that there were applications. You identified first-round finalists. You then did first-round interviews over two nights. And then second-round interviews that ended up being a full day with afternoon interviews by the board, and then presentations by the candidates, and then Q and A from some audience members. And you met that night and came back later, uh, to determine that you, uh, chose to halt the search at that time pending further direction. And you had a plan for the interim superintendent team. And the final stage then was putting that, uh, inter- interim superintendent team in place. The memo provides a little bit more detail about the interview process, but for the purpose of tonight, I think you have the four key areas that happened last year.
I don't know if, did Sherry include that memo in your packet? I don't know if she did or not.
No, I do not believe it's in there.
No, it's not in this.
Okay, we'll make sure you get it.
So we'll make sure you get it. I was just thinking that...
I think you were there.
Yeah. I do remember obviously.
I think you remember, yes. But it might help to see them kind of in one timeline outlined by those four key areas.
We'll make sure you, you get that. It's a, it's a great summary of, of what took place, and it'll, it'll just, um, it'll bring that whole process, uh, into perspective. Uh, just a, a quick couple of comments on operational norms. Last time, um, you were very, very clear about being transparent in the whole process. Hence, the video tonight to make sure our public, if they want to either be viewing it live now or, or later, uh, can, uh, can follow your discussion. And I, and I would propose to you, we continue that format. Second was consistency of communication with and to the staff and the community, um, regarding the search process. And again, I would recommend to you that we, we, we hold fast with that. And we, and we keep putting out as much information as we possibly can to continually inform and appropriately engage, uh, community and staff. And then, um, this pro, this operational thing is more of something that the three of us have talked about, Laurel, Barb, and I, is that when we hold the work sessions, in addition to videoing, we're going to take, uh, some notes to make sure that we follow up on everything, and we do everything as you described and prescribed, uh, uh, for us to take care of. So with that in mind, any comments about that transparency or the communication piece? Continue as is, change?
I, one hundred percent agree. We need to continue that openness and transparency with the community and staff. I don't know that we need to do a whole other community input process. I don't think that that will change very much from last year to this year. Maybe eliminate that piece to move this process quickly.
Yeah, I think that's part of the operational steps versus the basic understanding.
Yeah.
No, I, I would agree, you know. The, the transparency is what we've all agreed to and what everyone expects and demands, and the, the clear and consistent communication to all stakeholders. So, that is very, is needed, and, yeah, we did that last year.
Okay, I see all the heads nodding, so...
I was just going to ask what, you know, and I forget who I had in this conversation, but maybe, maybe I just had it myself, I'm not sure. What would your thoughts be, um, with us? I'm not sure how, how soon we'll be prepared to kind of put the criteria out there selecting a search firm. So what are your thoughts on us communicating within some of those appropriate magazines, associations, that we will be doing another search? So that, you know, the holidays are coming up. I, if somebody is thinking of making a move, I, I can't envision I could make that decision in two weeks. But if we kind of put a placeholder out there that we will be doing a superintendent search, um, you know, here's the Osseo School District type of thing so that if somebody sees it, I can't envision it would be a real expensive ad because it'll just be more, okay, well, you know better.
Here's the only thing I remember.
But that's just a high-level thought. Do we put kind of a, a, a placeholder out there so folks can think about it over the holidays? Or, or however quickly we can get our info out there?
Why don't you let me walk through a proposed search process? And, and, and part of the timeline that's in there, Dean, is to have it posted in December. If I have my druthers.
Okay.
And then that posting will cascade into January, which will be more than adequate time.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll get a hit before people probably get into that winter break syndrome in school districts. And then, you know, have it re-initiated as advertised again in January so that, uh, we hit it a couple times, so... I think it'll get at what you're saying. Plus, if we were to put that ad out at this time, they would send them into us, and then it depends on what kind of role you want with the search firm and, and what role you want me to do, which would determine where those applications... and what role you want me to do, which would determine where those applications are going to come in too. So I think that we'd best to hold, and I think we'll still have some adequate.
And I wasn't even thinking applications, it was more.
I know, but they're going to, they're going to start, well, where's the application material? And we won't have that stuff online, and so we don't want to bait and switch either.
They'll start sending their portfolios.
Yeah.
That's the biggest thing, what would I have done differently is started the process much earlier. Much earlier. So I'm glad we're doing that differently.
Well, collecting the criteria takes time. I mean, that is a, it's a month right there. I mean, by the time you decide what you want the meeting format to look like, you engage the community, you collect the feedback.
Yeah, we shut ourselves in a foot last year. We didn't meet in December. We pushed it, we wasted a month and a half because we wanted to do it after the holidays. And we wasted a month and a half, and that was to the detriment.
So starting earlier will definitely.
And we didn't meet frequently enough in the beginning, I don't think, either.
So let's.
Let them go through, let them go through.
Sorry, that was my fault.
So, no, 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 Dean jumped us right into the next piece. He knew it was coming.
It's my high D.
Yeah, there you go. And the next piece is to answer those two questions. Actually, Heather started with what do we do with the community profile? So the two questions I'd like you to respond to, for those of you who are intimately involved, and Dean, you've been involved before, you know, what went well? And I do have feedback from Stephanie and Jim, okay? I did email them, and I have feedback, so I'll share that with you. But what went well? And what would you do differently this time? And we're going to take notes and keep track of what you would like to do. Heather, you had started with the profile. I'll read some things from these two, that'll give you a few more minutes to think. And then I'd like you to share what you're thinking. What Jim shared, because he couldn't be here this evening, as Mike said in the regular meeting, is kind of what you said, Heather. We've already done multiple community feedback or input sessions, so most likely there's no need to repeat that. And the second thing that Jim suggested to do this time, and it's because of the newly-elected board members, is to involve those new board members as soon as possible so that they can help provide direction down the road. So those are his two suggestions. Stephanie, what went well? She liked the finalists, had the opportunity to make a presentation of the community and board. I've incorporated that in my suggested process this evening. It was helpful to have input from the stakeholders after the interviews were conducted. I'd say that's feedback and not input. It's more, you know, how did they feel about the candidates?
Those cards, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And whatever other system you use, because I think you had an online system too.
We did for viewers.
For some of it. And then the other thing she liked was the rating system and to narrow the candidates down. And I think Barb said it was a forced pairing type of, which is fairly common. And then you end up with a ranking because you put, you know, Jim against Jessica, Jessa, Jim against Mike, and that's kind of that forced pairing, and it does work really well. What would she do differently? She's suggesting that the board may consider going back out and gathering more input for that profile. And she didn't say redo it all, but maybe there's some ways to engage the public to sharpen that profile a little more. Second thing, and she knows that this treads on a very thin line. She said it would have been helpful to have more discussion with fellow board members, but she also knows you can't break the public open meeting laws. And so there are some parameters there that you have to follow, and it's just the way it operates. So you newly-elected ones, we don't go behind closed doors when it's this kind of process. It's as simple as that. And then, one thing though, that we can fix that she had suggested, and I do have it in my suggested format. She said it would have been nice for the board to participate a little more in the selection process of the actual first round of applicants. And I have a suggested methodology to get at that. So those were her three things she'd do differently, three things that she liked. And with that said, what are your suggestions this evening? And then we'll go to my suggested format of how to move this thing forward.
I'll share my observation. And I don't know if it's in the criteria, but as I've thought about it during that process and now, what I've come to realize from being on this school board is a school district with multiple high schools in multiple cities is very different than one high school that may encompass two or more cities. So multiple high schools in multiple cities is a very different creature than one high school. And obviously, I know there's elementary schools and junior high, middle schools, but that's a piece, to me, that's very different is our multiple high schools. And when you look around the state, there's not a lot of them like that. Anoka has multiple high schools. You know, Lakeville, they've got two, so for me that was.
There's several with two, but.
Yeah. And two's fine, right? But one, one alone is a much different dynamic than multiple high schools. The communities may look different, the schools may look and function differently. And so that would be a piece that I would look for.
Other things either you liked about the last process or you would do differently?
I would really appreciate, like what Stephanie said, having more input in the selection of the first round of candidates. That piece, I feel like, would have changed things. And then, of course, like we've already talked about, getting started earlier, I think is really crucial because I remember really distinctly, there were candidates that we had looked at on paper, and we were like, these could really work for our district. And by the time we even got to talk to them, they were already hired by other school districts. And so that really limited our options.
For me, the only problem I had with the process was when we had the audience here during the interview process, I felt there were members of the audience who were just outright blatantly disrespectful to the people we had chosen. There was audible sighs and just disrespectful things that occurred. And so the next time we go through that, either the chair should stop the meeting and address that and ask the audience participants to be respectful, or we just need to make clear that these are the people we've brought forward, and they're deserving of respect. So that's the only issue that I had throughout the entire process.
I one hundred percent agree with that. And I also think maybe if there's some way, the cards that we had were, I remember there being a lot of comments that had nothing to do with the applicants, and they were more nitpicky about, you know, what people were wearing or things like that. That doesn't really play into the quality of the applicant or the situation. So I don't know if we could, like, prompt, like, I don't know. You know, like you have like starter.
You can suggest it, you'll never.
Well, that's true, that's true. But I think you can, what you can control is the environment that they have.
Yeah.
Oh, without a doubt.
Yeah, that's what I'm agreeing with you on that. I think that's really important because that was, it was kind of hard to weed through and find the actual pieces of information that were important that we needed to consider.
Sure.
Let's go with the one what well. What went well was at least some of the online feedback gathering. The in-person input into the spec, when we went to three schools, we got thirty people out of parents who should have been in the thousands. So that piece didn't go well, but we did get input online. You know, and we did get, you know, a thousand different people involved. So I think that went, that went fine. Some of the process, the fixed pairing, yeah, that's standard stuff. And, you know, we were able to rank people in it. I don't think people were surprised with that, with some of the outcomes. Even better if, the timing. I mean, I fought against the timing last year. We wasted a month and a half, and that's why we're here right now doing it early. We need to get out in front of everybody. Even better if, you know, the way that the search firm worked the last time, they put together a pool and they shopped it to ten of their own clients, and that was a problem. So we're not going to go through that. You know, even better if we get our own candidate pool and not a one that's being shopped around. And, you know, so those are my, well, and the third one really comes down to, again, being able to have additional input upfront in the process and not being surprised with a group of ten or eleven that came in that we had to rank, you know, through simple videos and things like that.
Anything else that you can, that surfaces? It doesn't, if you drive away tonight, it's just an email or a phone call, so it's not the end of the world. But anything else that surfaces this evening?
I think those are really the big things.
Okay. Yep. Just a couple, any quick comments from the three of you in the audience about the process last time? And you don't have to, but.
So I guess like from my standpoint, I think as much as you can reuse the pieces of the last process, like the community input, what's not, what you think isn't going to have changed from just a year ago to save time by reusing that information? I think it would be helpful to speed this process.
Jackie, Kelsey?
I would just, sorry. You know, my only concern about not going back to get input was that was around a time that the district had a lot of other things going on on the board chair, on the board chair. So it created a lot of uneasiness with community. And I actually went to one of the sessions, and it was kind of a ruin. So I think that, you know, just the context of that, that happening at that particular time, I do think it'd be, I don't think necessarily you need to go back and redo everything. But I do think that there, it could have changed kind of some people's focus on what the priorities of the profile should be for the next superintendent, given some of the issues that we're facing. So that's what I would say. I don't know, I'm not saying it's extensive, like for the next month, but I do think that there's some room back.
Jackie, anything that's.
Well, and I know Stephanie said it would be nice to have just have partial, like not the whole big process of getting feedback. But if there's a way we can utilize the online piece and then maybe reach out to some of the communities where they may not have as much access to computers to see if we can get, you know, some quicker feedback. But I think getting on, I think getting on the board fast is key. I mean, just speaking as someone who's been in education for a long time, people start looking early.
Good, good. Well, let me share with you what I'm going to suggest. And it doesn't incorporate what everyone just said. You have to understand that because this was drafted last night here when the voice basket review people asked me what I was doing here. I said, I'm busy preparing for this meeting tonight. So I did not go in and perform any acts or agree to do anything either, so. And there's nothing magical about what I'm going to suggest. And you don't have to take any of my suggestions. It's as simple and clear-cut as that. But I give you this caveat. Having been a participant in the search process, having observed them, and then listening, not just in the last six, seven weeks that I've been here working, but really starting last May already, when you as board members engaged me to come here and do this work, this is what I would suggest. And I obviously didn't have time like Patricia to put it up on some nice PowerPoints. The first thing is you have to decide what you want my role to be. The board that hired me said, we want you to be really intimately involved in doing this search process. We want, we're hiring you to help us do this. And if that's changed, then I need to know. It does change what our work would look like. It changes my work priorities in the next coming months also. But that needs some clarification. Kate shouldn't have been involved. She was the sitting superintendent, and that's pretty typical. So her notion or her decision a year ago to pull back and you do this, that's what I did too when I was a permanent superintendent. That's a typical approach. I know that we have some suggestions about collecting information. Maybe we can do something via online. But I'm going to tell you, I'm not sure it's going to change an awful lot. Maybe what Kelsey said is true. Maybe if we do something online, we may pull in a few more voices. But I'm going to suggest some quickness or some speed or, as I said, urgency to this process over redoing all that data collection. I looked at the sheet that was collected last time. There's a hundred and ten themes in there, okay? And that might be helpful for you to see again too, which was then narrowed down and crunched down to that profile. And having seen multiple profiles, again, I'm not trying to disagree with anybody this evening or people who have shared things with me. I can throw up about ten of those profiles across ten different districts, and they're going to look pretty similar. There'll be a little nuances here and there, and I think that's what you were getting at, Kelsey. There may be some pieces out there. And so maybe there's some way to reconnect in it. But it's got to be short and quick, and we have to have that information soon. Because you want that profile so that a search firm can use that to match up what you're looking for. I would still select a search firm to assist with the process, but they'd have a reduced role. They're not going to do that whole big community input, which was about half of their work, okay? They'll do a recruitment screening and assist with the interview process. And then, as I told Laurel and Barb this morning, I said, all of a sudden, my concrete side got ahold of me, and I decided I'm going to put it down in a concrete fashion tonight and see if this makes any sense. So what I would do is in phase one, the recruitment of candidates, and I'll give this to you. I'll send it out to you. So you don't have to take notes tonight. Phase one would be the recruitment of candidates by the search firm and me, okay? I have a network out there also. I've already asked someone about the job. They happened to turn me down. I also had someone else approach me and say, I have a couple people that might be interested in that position. When can they call you and talk to you about it? Or should they be calling somebody else? So I'm not saying I have a great network because I am on the more mature side of the spectrum of superintendents, but I do have a network out there.
Jim, it's called wisdom.
Yeah, wisdom, okay. Phase two would be candidate screening, and the goal here, well, the goal in the first one is to get a quality pool of candidates. A goal in phase two is to increase your involvement in the application screening process. And what I would suggest, that we requested the search firm at the board to play a role in candidate screening. And that the search firm, along with two board members and myself, me, would conduct a screening interview of the candidates that the search firm would bring forward. So they would bring forward seven, eight, nine. Minneapolis did this, St. Paul's done this. They did it in Buffalo when I left, same thing, where we took less than a quorum, but you have to trust one another, okay? And a couple people, I know, a couple people with the superintendent, the search firm, at least you have your ore in the water going into that process, okay? So I just beg your indulgence right now for a few minutes. After the screening interviews are completed, you have, you then have a slate to present to the full board. And now they're all going to become public and known, and they're going to be termed under state law as finalists, even though they're not your finalists, as you did last time, because you did a couple steps at that point. Phase three, the initial finalist round. The goal is to have the full board assess the candidate slate, reduce the number of candidates for in-depth review by multiple stakeholder groups in the school board. So you would conduct an initial interview, much like you did last time. It'd be sixty, ninety minutes. You're going to probably do them over a couple days, like you did last time. And we can develop a public feedback tool online, you did last time, and people in the audience that night so that you can get feedback from them and what they observe in the candidates. And then either after the last interview, last time you did it after the last interview, but I think you only had one candidate on the last night, which made it easy because you had the feedback on the other candidates the previous night. But a lot of times what boards will do is if they have, let's say, three and three, they'll regroup the next day so that they've had time to look at that last round of candidates through the course of the evening, come back the next day, and then make a decision. Out of those six candidates, do we have two or three that we want to push forward or do we not? That we can all agree on, and you want to agree to say, we believe we can support those people depending on the outcome of the next step, okay? So that would be phase three. So you're all going to participate, and your community's going to give feedback, and staff will give feedback in that process in step three. So while I had a narrower screening process, your screening process a year ago was, here are your candidates, board. At least this way, you have a couple board members looking at those and saying, hmm, are these the right people that could fit in our district and me, okay? And not just relying on the search firm. Again, this is all to be determined. Step four would be the second finalist interview round. The goal is to study each candidate in depth and find out if the right candidate is present to extend an offer to. And you're going to do a lot of steps, like you did last time. I know this district usually does a writing sample. I think that's great. I know last time they had an in. I know last time they had an informal meeting. It's a interview with the cabinet. But those are the direct reports to the superintendent, and you do want that group to have some time with these candidates to get a feel. You know, is this someone we can, and, and can work with? I'm gonna suggest a very different process in this round than what you went through last time. And I know you were nervous. You just made some comments about public involvement. I'm gonna suggest an open Q and A session with staff, administrators, and community to be facilitated by the search firm. I have participated. I've been on both sides of this process. In other words, they're not structured questions. We would be in here tonight, let's say I'm the candidate, and Laurel and Barb are the search firm, and Kelsey, and Jackie, and Tanya, and Anthony, and.
Brenda. Brenda.
Would all submit questions, and, or they would just come to the mic and ask a question. But as the search firm people, they would regulate and stop behavior that was inappropriate, questions that are inappropriate, and, and control that process. It does work well. I can, I know you're, you're starting to conjure up in your minds, my gosh, what if we have two, three, four hundred people there? You might. I can tell you, I was in one where there was about two hundred and fifty people there from the community, okay? And we went at it for about ninety minutes. And the thing I like about that format though is you're really gonna find out, can your superintendent stand, I, to use a cliche, stand and deliver under pressure in front of different groups? Can they relate to the community? Can they answer those questions? How are they answering those questions? And what I'm gonna suggest is not only does the search firm facilitate that, that those written groups, those, those groups that attend those sessions provide written feedback that night or that day, and I would really like to see one or two board members present at each one of those Q and A sessions. So you're listening also at the same time. Doesn't have to be the same board members. It'd be nice if one could be consistent, but it doesn't have to be. And, and I think hearing is a little different sometimes than just, cause you'll get a feel when you're in the room versus just reading something from a, a document that someone's handed in or the search firm has collected into themes. I would skip the dinner piece. I know you, I think you did it last time with the candidates. Here's why. I'm gonna speak from a candidate perspective. You're on, on point all day long. You start in the morning and you're going. There is no breather in this process. I would submit to you that the candidate's gonna feel like it's an interview with you as a board anyway, okay? And so I'm gonna suggest to you that you give them a reprieve and don't do the dinner. I'll take them to dinner, or we'll order in a sandwich here or wherever, where they can just sit and relax for a period of time. Catch their breath and get ready for the evening, which will be a presentation in front of whoever comes that night, much like you did last time, and then followed by your interview of, of the, of the two or three, you know, finalists. And you do that same process for each one of them. After the last one has been conducted, you regroup the next day, come back in, do your ranking, your force pairing or whatever that process is gonna be, and you determine, is there again, the right candidate in this mix that we feel we can extend an offer to? You take a vote on that. If you are ready to vote and say, yes, we have the right candidate, and then you empower the board chair and the vice chair to begin the negotiation process of a contract with that individual. And that is phase six, okay? Phase five is determining that person. Phase six is negotiating the contract. Phase seven is approving that contract, and then phase eight is that transition planning with that candidate. Here's my recommendation regarding search firms. You went through a long process last time. You invited a lot of search firms in. There's a lot of firms with Midwest roots. McPherson and Jacobson, I know of them, and they're out of Omaha. Pro Act's out of Milwaukee. Ray and Associates, who you used, out of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. BWP out of Chicago. School Exec Connect, which is Minneapolis and Chicago. And then in addition to those larger firms that traditionally do these, uh, in Minnesota, the MSBA organization does it, the school board organization. Springstead, who's done a lot of city and county administrator types of searches. They just entered the superintendent search field a year ago. Kelly Smith and Pam do the searches. They haven't done many of them, so their experience is a little limited. And then there, I call them small shops. There's Charlie Kite, Ed Waltman, and Ken LaCroix who do them. So that's kind of the gamut in Minnesota with, with people who do that. I've had the opportunity to work with three different search firms. And again, given the staff and board comments and comments that I received regarding your last search, I would suggest the following. One, that you don't retain Ray and Associates, that we end the contract, pay off what is owed to them. They are waiting in the wings yet to, to, to commence work again. And I would recommend that you hire School Execs Connect to do the search, and I'm gonna tell you why, okay? One, I think they'll be flexible in your process steps. They have done that screening process upfront with other districts, okay? And so they'll know how to handle that and how to prepare for that. And they'll consider it more of a joint venture with you, I think, than a firm that isn't around and not based out of Minnesota. And you, and you selected a firm, very purposeful last time. I'm not saying it was the wrong selection, okay? If you determine not to recreate the full process, which is I kinda heard tonight, not just from those three, but you as a board, School Exec Connect has the best roots in Minnesota and probably understands OASIO better than if you went to McPherson out of Omaha, McPherson and Jacobson, or Pro Act out of Milwaukee, okay? They're not gonna know much about you, or about us, I should say, all right? And so that's another reason for recommending. They're gonna know Minnesota law. And there were some hiccups last time. You people probably didn't sense it, because Judy took care of those issues before they arrived to your table, okay? And I know that when Edina did their search, they too, with BWP out of Chicago, had some hiccups about, when can you go, you can't go into executive session. This isn't Illinois, okay? And so, uh, they do know the, the law here in Minnesota. I already said they'd be engaging. They'll listen. They'll recruit candidates from Minnesota. They'll recruit nationally too. They'll probably have a little bit more of a Midwestern flair than, um, some of the firms would. But they've done searches and they work with Missouri, Iowa, Wisconsin, Illinois, Minnesota, North Dakota. And I know they've done South Dakota. They've done Sioux Falls a few times. Sioux Falls is a very similar sized district, a little smaller than we are. And the last thing I'd say, I know many of their professional associates, quite a few of them. In fact, I know their founding member in fact, who's now retired from the, the group. And I've worked with Ken Dragseth off and on over a number of projects when he was a superintendent and now as School Exec Connect President. And I would recommend that if you do go with them, that we require or request, we require, we request and require that Ken lead the search, okay? And that's where I can help. I've known Ken for thirty some years. So that request will not be demeaning or, or inappropriate of, of, of our district to ask of them. Timeline. I'd say November twenty eighth meeting is what I'd like to do. And you'll get copies of this too, but on the twenty eighth, I'd like to finalize the search process steps and timeline. Discuss, and if possible, select a firm to do the search. Discuss our three roles so that we know what you want us to do. Review the superintendent profile components. Barb has that ready to go already. And then if you do wanna do some minimal outreach, what would that outreach be and what would that timeline be? And we don't wanna slow down the process, is what I heard from everybody. And then discuss salary and compensation. You wanna, you wanna be firm on where you are as early as possible. I didn't say decide it, but discuss it, okay? When we come back on the fourth, if you did, if you did do those things, then we invite the search firm to come and be a part of that evening on the fourth, to review what we want as far as process steps, what we want in the, what, what the profile is, what the salary and compensation we are suggesting, and we get some feedback from them. Timeline that they would, you know, that we, we're going through this evening, and then obviously discuss it with them. And then the vacancy posting, kinda back to your statement earlier, Dean. Phase two, the candidate screening begins no later than the week of January twenty eighth. So we, we post it before the holidays, but we give some breathing room afterwards, kinda following what you were saying, Dean. So we don't lose some people, but we still stay early enough, much earlier than you were a year ago. The initial finalist interview, which is when the whole board participates and the community and staff are here to listen, we conduct those the week of January twenty. So it's gonna go week, 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 and we're not backing off. So you gotta be ready. So we do that the week of January twenty eighth. No, excuse me, uh, February fourth. So the candidate screening, the week of January twenty eighth, the initial, uh, interview round, the fourth, the second interview round, the week of February eleventh. Phase five, the school board deliberation should be that same week, in my opinion. You just do it the next day after the last candidate. And phase six, they initiate the contract negotiations, what happened the following week, which is February eighteenth. And then phase seven, approving the contract. What I would do is, yeah, I'm pushing the, the limits.
Yeah, you are.
What I would do is if you get a candidate selected and a contract negotiated, you may, we may wanna consider having a special meeting, because that candidate isn't secure until you sign on the dotted line also, okay? And I don't want, I know I'm being kinda persnickety, but I don't want any hiccups right now. I don't want any, you know, potholes that we hit in the road. So we may wanna have a special meeting. If that contract can be negotiated quickly, sometimes it can, sometimes it can't. I've been on both sides of that as a participant, where it's been done in a day and where it's been done over three weeks, okay? So it, there, there's, there's a, uh, you know, we may have to, that may get tuned back into March sometime, but I'd rather do it as soon as possible. And then obviously phase three, the transition takes place after that, once we know when they can come on board and, and help on some transition days and that. So with that, um, role of district staff, I'd end up being your point person, just what you hired me to be. The information would be funneled through me. Our, my team would be Laurel and Barb and Veronica, the HR secretary. So, um, she would keep, our administrative assistant would keep track of everything. I work with you to develop and implement the process, assist with recruitment, screen candidates, and I'll tend to all your functions, as if I was, that's what I was hired to do. And then assist Laurel and Barb with their roles. Barb would do all the communication, staff, parent, guardian, broader community. And if we decide to do any kind of student or, or community engagement, should you wanna do something beyond something online or whatever for the profile? And she would work with the search firm on any publications, um, application materials, profile, document, et cetera. Laurel will assist the, the search firm and, and I on the interview steps and set up all the interview pieces. She will make sure that our questions are legal, so we're not out of bounds. You know, in every state, you can ask different things. And in some states, there's, there's, and ours are parameters. She'll also take care of, she's already collecting data on salary and compensation for our comparable districts, so you'll have that upfront as we begin that discussion. And then she will take care of all the expense accounting with the search firm invoices and reimbursements to the candidate. I was long-winded. You saw nothing in writing, cause I make, no, I make promises. I would do everything I said. But I will capture this in a written document for you. But I, I wanted to lay out a process and to give you something to chew on. And, uh, we don't have, we can talk about it tonight, but we for sure wanna come back on the twenty eighth and say, where is it we're gonna go and, and move quickly on, on formulating this, this search process. Laurel and Barb, what did I forget?
Think you got it?
Right at all.
Okay. You asked me to do this when you hired me, so I wrote it down. Did what you asked me to do. You don't have to like it. You don't have to like it, and you don't have to do it. That's the nice thing about it, so.
So can we hire you on?
Right?
That was back here, and Rosemount Apple Valley did that.
So when, when we did, when we made the decision, the very specific decision to bring on the, the two interim superintendents, the reason we chose you was to do this, was to lead this. You're twenty-four years' experience as soup, the going through the searches, the network, and everything else. So, yeah, I, I absolutely agree that this is the right way to go, and I find nothing to change or challenge within the process steps. I think it meets the needs of what we had discussed and what the problems were from the last round. The timing is, is aggressive, but I, I absolutely agree we need to do that. So you, you have no, no concern for me on, on that timing and availability and drive in forward. So, uh, yeah, I, and, and from the search firm, I remember the discussions from last year. You know, I'm, I'm gonna use, based upon that, but also a lot of your judgment, as you said. You've worked with them. You know the, you know them. You know what's going on. Yeah, I for one don't have an issue with that at this point either, so I appreciate the thoroughness of what you presented.
Heather, Dean, Jessica?
I wouldn't echo that. Yeah, I mean, it, it always sounds and feels like an aggressive timeline, but there is a lot of stuff to get done, so, um, it, it has to be.
I agree.
It's gonna be, you know, back to back, you know, week, 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 yeah.
Especially if something does come up where we have to push a week out. We're not being pushed really far out by something like that. Hopefully, nothing like that happens, but I'd rather be onboarding somebody and getting them prepared in March and April and May than still wondering what the heck we're doing.
We were interviewing in March.
I know.
And we're hiring before then, and that's where we should have been the last time.
And I, I think that's absolutely crucial, so, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into this process.
Well, I've been thinking it since the day we met. And what was I gonna say this evening?
Yeah.
So I've been waiting in the wings.
It is much appreciated. I, like Mike, I don't see anything that I am going, whoa, hold the brakes on that. I, I think this is gonna be good for us.
Yeah, I would add, I mean, I think it's good to have that personal relationship with the search firm, because, uh, you know, you'll be able to influence or steer how they're thinking about it. And they're gonna know OASIO, um, and so having that personal relationship may, uh.
That intimacy of our district.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, we're getting a little bit of feedback, but, um, I don't like the idea of only having two members kinda funneling it down. I think I understand Stephanie's reasoning behind it, because the search firm, I don't know that we had had the best confidence in how they did it. I think my confidence level might be a little bit higher with you, um, determining the people to bring forward to us. So my only change would be, I would like to see the full slate that your team brings forward and not necessarily it being funneled through to board members. But I mean, obviously, I'd be open to discussing that further. I don't wanna take up too much time here tonight. But then my other question is, do we have anyone that has reviewed the contract with Ray and Associates? And was there an out? Are we entitled to any kind of refunds, any, anything? Because it wasn't successful, um, and maybe that can't be discussed here.
I would need Tim as a, to give me a legal opinion on it. We've discussed it and have a feeling that, of what we should do, but we can certainly look at the contract and.
Great.
See if there's any out.
Great.
Jessica, your comment, um, so if you, if you want other board members to review all of the candidates, that's also gonna have to fall into that really.
It's a public process then.
Yeah, that becomes.
If, um, you know, if, if they narrow it down to twenty people, you're gonna have to plan probably a half hour to an hour for each.
The process, I think, was actually fair. We sat down in our individual rooms, and we went through the videos, and we went through the resumes, and I thought that was a great process. I have no complaint with that. I don't, I don't, I don't understand the reasoning by, behind just funneling it through two board members, and then we're presented with the slate that those two board members picked. I don't like that.
That's not, that, I, I don't, I think you misunderstood that. I think it's.
Okay.
Two board members, I mean, with the spec in mind.
Well, I understand that.
With the search firm and with Jim, you know, so it's everyone looking at that.
But we had major disagreements between candidates, and that.
But, but we only had a slate of eleven.
Before we get to that ten.
Right. We only had a slate of eleven, and we were arguing there. It was, we could have had a better slate if there was some more input upfront. That's what we're talking about, the twenty-eight or thirty, or how many come in? I, I don't think it's up to, I don't think it's feasible for everyone to go through that one hour process and, and, and have anything in your mind about all of those candidates. I think it was very difficult, even with the eleven, in going through that process. So time is of the essence, and, you know, having these open, you know, the, the discussions on all eleven, you know, people need to be able to talk to each other, and we can do that in, in smaller groups. I, I, I think that's, you know, that's what Jim was getting at, and it's been successful in, in his experience in, in many other searches.
I, you know, the, the, the issue is what I said before, the, the board members, the newly elected ones and the current city ones, you, you do have to have an element of, of, of respect and trust, and, and, um, what it also does is. respect and trust, and and what it also does is candidates who are putting their foot in the water, because in Illinois and Wisconsin, I'm not sure about North Dakota or South Dakota, and I know in Missouri, you're not exposed as a candidate in your initial interview round. And so consequently, a lot of suburban districts in Illinois get a lot of good candidates because like a 3M or any other corporation, those people aren't out in front of, you know, everyone in the community.
And their current employer.
And their current employer. So my comment, it's really twofold. It's it's to get you people more involved, and otherwise, you are just gonna have the search firm, again, present you five five candidates. I was trying to create something that would allow you to at least have your foot in the water and say, who are the candidates that you that you looked at and who would you bring to us? And then let us interview those people to see if the rest of the board would agree with those, that feel the candidates or not. And it it provides somewhat of a situation where the candidate at least can get through the initial process and say, is this gonna work for me or not?
Yeah, we had a lot of people, we had people drop out that, you know, because they didn't wanna be publicly announced, or, you know, they didn't have the upfront discussion with with board members.
I just have, I just have, I don't like it. I I
I understand.
I want it to come to the full board equally. I don't want two people to have heads up, I just, I don't like the process that way. But that's just my opinion.
We could also, if you want to, just the search firm and I review.
That's, I would prefer that.
I was just trying to listen to what board members have said to say, geez, we didn't even get to see these people. And I know in in Buffalo, when they hired my replacement, the board appreciated the fact, but there was a different situation, it's seven-member board, and three of them could look at it without being a, you know, a a open meeting.
You can have up to three here.
Uh, we looked at it. I'd have to have, I'd have to have Tim look at that.
But I think the biggest concern going through that process with Stephanie, I know her reasoning, and it it would be because we had a significant amount of outstate, out-of-state candidates. We, we didn't have a lot of people from in-state, so I think, well, I can't speak for the previous board member, but I think my frustration came from not being able to control who came through to us, but I would trust this situation a little bit, if that makes any sense, I don't know if I'm making any more sense.
I think it makes sense, I think what you're saying makes sense. But I also think it would be helpful to have some eyes in there. Let's say we have thirty people, you know, just to have, but again, there's where that faith comes in, that that the other board members are gonna take everyone's potential consideration and say, okay, these ten, I'll bring back to the rest of the group, you know, instead of having strangers
Right.
who don't know our district very well.
Well, I'm open to talking about it, I don't wanna keep wasting time tonight, I'm tired, but that's just, that was just my one thought about the whole process, so, otherwise, I'm out.
Duly noted.
Okay.
That's okay. That's why we're we're talking about it, because it's your process, not mine, okay? And so it's it's your decisions on how we move forward. Anything else about what I suggested? People, Tanya, Jackie, Kelsey?
Board members elect.
I really like your process. I would wholeheartedly agree and support exactly what you wrote down.
Totally agree. When it comes to the point of contracting with the firm, it'll be very, we'll be very clear on what's the value proposition. It sounds like it's primarily execution and potentially a little bit of the network would be the value proposition, so having to right-size that contract would be important.
I I do agree with that, I mean, I think what alleviated any, like, angst that I had around engagement is that piece of, kind of that open kind of town hall that people could come. Because I think that's probably the piece of it, I mean, being just coming off of an election, you know, a campaign, I mean, that was probably the number one thing people talked about, where the superintendent, not necessarily everything that happened in the past, but like, how do you move forward from it? This would alleviate a lot of concerns that people had, and people really would be able to be present, ask questions, and open format, that really reflects our community.
Okay. That might, that, okay, that's that's good.
And I think that would eliminate the need personally to do any input on the criteria for the superintendent.
Oh, on the front end.
The rest would be such an open process that that I think we could eliminate that.
Okay.
I just wanted to add to what they were saying about the the community open forum piece is that I feel like we would wanna make sure, because we didn't have very much community members showing up when we had those public meetings, that we would need to promote that as much, with as much advantage notice as we have. No, I know, I'm just saying, but we wanna be as aggressive as possible.
I went to several cities and went to their city council, got on TV.
Yep.
But those are two different things. One was the initial input, and then one is the feedback. I think we got a lot of feedback, we had a lot of people online, we had a lot of people here, so I think that process
And if I can just add too, remember that you had one objective, which was gathering input. You had multiple ways of doing it. So we did large groups, small group, online. I I know that the the larger community sessions didn't attract many people, but remember the online tremendous, the search firm said it was more than they'd ever seen. So it's multiple ways at getting us at a single objective.
Thanks, Barb. What else do you need by next week? Because it's a short week, and the twenty-eighth comes up right after that, for that next work session on the twenty-eighth. I'll put this in a written format so everyone can see that, and so I'll take care of that. But is there, are there other things out there that you need? I'll I'll get the agendas out to you too, so you can see what would, you know, be part of the twenty-eighth and then part of the fourth. Is there anything else you can think of?
No.
Is the profile public?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can get that to you. That's not a problem, because we, it's, yeah. Okay, that'd be
Great.
In fact, it's part of the discussion next time.
And it's pretty much put in every magazine, and so it's out there.
Let me say one thing before you adjourn the meeting and before you get your coat on, get out the door. And I think this is important to say, in making that final selection, I'm talking to the board members and the newly elected board members, you need to collect and review stakeholder input, which we just talked about. We're gonna rely on a little bit of the database last year, and that's okay, because you will collect a lot of feedback this time if this is the process that you adopt with the Q and A type of format, and people have a chance. That's what you're doing, you're creating opportunities for them to provide you feedback. You also need to assess, and you need to assess the candidates based on that, the profile and the feedback you get, but you also have to assess this can, or these candidates from your perspective as board members. It's a combination of all of that that should push you to your final decision, okay? And as I stated at the beginning, it's a responsibility that rests on your shoulders and no one else's. And I'm I'm actually looking forward to it. I I I think we'll get out of the chute quickly, and we'll get at it, and and we're only looking for one, and so we have to remember, okay? So thanks for your time tonight. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Any, any final questions?
One quick question for Barb, and this may be some of, this may be a question with your colleagues that do the survey questions. I know over the years when the board has had feedback, free-form dialogue feedback is so hard to quantify. Is there any way we can incorporate like Survey Monkey-type stuff where maybe, I'll just make up a number, ten, ten, ten criteria is there so that as they click on the radial button, it's more easy to quantify so that when the feedback comes back to the board, I I don't have eight pages of sentences, it's hard hard to, how do you wrap your brains around how many folks had that idea?
That's exactly how it was done last year. It was called the Thirty Quality Survey, so people were responding to the same set of, do you want this, this, or this? That was at the front end. Now, during the interviews, they also had fixed questions, and we did online, you know, choose to make it easy to analyze.
See, I didn't do the online.
Yeah, and some people still wrote in some free-form responses. So, you know, if people choose to write responses, of course, we're going to accept them.
It's amazing, though, when the search firm has conducted those sessions, and I've watched them or have been a participant in, they'll quantify that data real quickly, because after each session, they'll step aside and start charting through it to see what are they seeing? Because I've seen it done just as Barb described, where there's set questions, and then some, you know, some people wanna go outside the lines and outside the box, and 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 you need to honor that too. And, but I watch them, and they'll be able to hand off to the board, you know, that evening or the next day when you start the second round, here are the themes that we've
There may be seven themes, okay.
Because that's, that's what we're, there's your value add, that's what we're paying them to do. We want that information, we need you to quantify that, so. All right?
Great.
Good.
All right, with that, we don't even have to vote, we're adjourned. All right, thanks.